I'm going to call the November twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we always do, we have a moment of reflection and tonight, I would like you to keep the families of Bratton Thompson, who was a sixty-two-year member of the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department, who passed away this week, and Al Heslin, who's retired Public Works Director, who also passed away this week. We have the flags and have the town flag and have stand in order of these gentlemen and they'll be, after their services, we'll take them back up to a normal state. I'll get you to join me and stand and join me for the pledge with Mr. Plin.
You never had the moment of reflection.
Oh, yeah, well, let's do that. Take a moment. I've always wanted to be able to... I'm sorry, I blapped through the moments of reflection, but didn't give time to take reflection. So, let's take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now, if you'd please rise and join us in pledge allegiance to the Council, Casey Jenkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. And under section two dash sixty-one, questions containing several distinct propositions, if the question under the discussion contains several distinction propositions, the same shall be divided by the request of any member and a vote taken separately. This is code nineteen seventy-two, two dash twenty-one, code nineteen seventy-two, two dash sixty. That's for separating the adjustments to the agenda, to the adjustments to the budget for the...
Budget revision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what is it? Did you want to...
I want to separate each of the items under that.
All right, then, we have a motion to do that. Do I have a second?
There is no motion with that. You can just carry on.
There's a motion. Is there a motion?
I want to make the changes to the agenda under the proposed code.
In the form of a motion.
And, no, I am asking for a change to the agenda, but it doesn't have to be voted.
Counsel, do you want to help that change?
I don't.
My understanding really, it doesn't have to be voted, right?
Well, she's referring to the town code, and it does say, "The same shall be divided in the conquest of any member and a vote taken separately."
Is it an adjustment to the agenda?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Hicks, we'll hear another hour. Thank you. Anything else? Very good. For public hearings tonight, we have fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment. Mr. Wingfield, Ms. Tweedy, would you like to discuss those?
At the last meeting, we presented the budget amendment. It's been advertised in the paper. It's posted up on our website. The summary was posted in the paper for two weeks running. So, tonight is just a public hearing for members of the town who would like to have any input or comments with regard to that budget amendment. There is no vote by council this evening on the budget.
So, now, Brittany, do you have those figures? Do I... Val, are you giving us those projections or are we just opening up to us?
It was open for public comment. It was posted. I can go over the numbers if you'd like for the budget amendment.
So, there is a public hearing here to address that, is that correct?
Can you pull up the budget amendment that was in last week's package?
So, the summary of the budget amendment is that the whole first section of this is the capital projects, which is rolling over unspent funds from the close of fiscal twenty-four into fiscal twenty-five. They're all designated as rollover amounts. There are a couple of increases in capital projects where we see received higher than expected bids. The net rollovers are five hundred and thirteen thousand and increases are a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. Adjustments to the general fund programs total two million, one hundred and seven dollars, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. The biggest portion of that is one point nine for reallocating, for land acquisition, twenty-three thousand, two fifty for reallocating insurance costs, a new full-time position for building inspections for twenty-seven thousand, five hundred for six months, parking lot repairs for fire and rescue for forty thousand dollars, and unexpected repairs for aquatics and parks and recreation totaling seventy-four thousand, four hundred, planning commission stipends of two thousand, and a contribution to NRV RC housing fund of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four. In the special revenue fund, we're adding some grant revenues and expenditures due to changes in grant funding amounts, particularly with CDBG and some ARPA funds are being reallocated for the completion of the Phase One College Street Drainage and to the Regional Commission Building and Hickok Drainage Project. Those all have to be fully obligated by twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-four. And finally, in the stormwater and water and sewer enterprise, there's fund rollovers for capital projects that weren't completed in twenty-four and some changes to grant loan funds for the treatment plant, allocating the three point six million additional grant slash loan funds that were received. We only budgeted fifteen in the original budget and the grant loans were eighteen point six million dollars. So, there's additional support from the general fund for stormwater for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. And that's kind of the summary.
Is there anyone here to address this request, this public hearing?
First of all, something seventy, Rimby Street. I have two concerns in there. One is the stuff for the New River Valley Regional Commission, their new building. I mean, according to their charter, it has to be in Pulaski. Unless you get all the members to vote, which maybe they have. I haven't been able to find where they have to move it anywhere other than Pulaski. But their charter says it has to be in Pulaski. And one point six million dollars for property acquisition for a piece of land that's valued on the tax books at three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars? You could double that amount, use eminent dome paint, and save eight hundred thousand dollars. It's, I mean, you're just spending money like there's no tomorrow. And I guess it's all free money to you, but somebody's got to pay for it, and it's us.
I think one of the things too, Chris, you're referring to that as agricultural land. When we had it appraised, we had it appraised as I two or R two, which, as you all know, those are probably...
I two with a rezoning request and a request by Randy Wingfield, the town manager, to rezone it for I two, which increases the value. You could get it at agricultural and then rezone it later.
That figure was in line with what they asked us originally, so. Anyone else? Hearing none, I will close this portion of the...
Can I say something? There is someone up there.
Russ, what are you...
That's the budget. That was still in regards to the budget, I believe.
We're not, we're past that. We're now doing on...
This is part of the budget amendment thing. I did, go ahead, sir.
That's coming up next in public hearing, Russ.
So, I do think the timing of this is kind of disrespectful, especially because we're trying to appropriate this land for, before we hear the public comments and the public hearing from people speaking out about this. Feels like we're making a decision before hearing the people's concerns. And we're kind of throwing like the saddle before the horse on this one. And I just feel like that was one of the reasons why I wanted to also separate the budget amendment. I just feel like it's very unfair.
If you look at a discussion and action by mayor and council, there is nothing about the budget amendment. That'll be done until next week.
I understand.
And you have time. We'll split it out for you. So, we're not the new public board. I'll have these public hearings before we'll be back.
But you're having a public hearing about this thing, very much thing that they're speaking about right now.
Anyone else? I'll close this section. The next is a rezoning request by David L. Dove and Henny P. Dove, property owners, in the town of Christiansburg, advocate to rezone property low paid at two fifty-five Simmons Road, northeast, approximately one point four acre, tax parcel five hundred dash A dash one A, parcel ID is oh one nine six five six, and approximately point four six acres, tax parcel four nine nine dash one four dash A, and the parcel ID one nine six five five. From eight agriculture to I two general industrial, probably as designated as residential with future land use map, two thousand and thirteen comprehensive plan. Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue?
That's the town council. I'm making the request on behalf of the town. The request is for a public works complex. The town has grown through the years and we feel a need for a new public works complex. Existing facility is in the one hundred-year flood plain. It's smaller in size and there's also topography challenges with the site. So, we've been actually looking for a new site for several years. I will think that this would probably be a land banking situation because we would plan to develop it a few years down the road. But, like I say, I think we've been looking for a site for a few years. I think that's, I guess, it's most of council matters. The property that we're looking at, I'm sure maybe perhaps some of the... Could maybe go to the other drawing first, Simmons Road. Property right now is zoned agriculture. And as mentioned, it's scheduled as residential and the future land use map. I would, I guess, respectfully ask that council and planning commission review the future land use map with the comprehensive plan review that's ongoing right now. Also, I'll just point out, I guess, adjoining uses and zoning across the street of Simmons Road. You've got Corning, which is I two general industrial. The southwest corner, you've got the Honda dealership, which is B three general business. And if you notice a house there on the corner of it, it's just been recently demolished. And that's going to be actually an addition to the dealership. Along Haynes Street there, you've got residential. And Teal Street, of course, you've got residential backing up too. On the other side of Teal, of course, you've got commercial Sheiler and also some industrial uses with the industrial part. And along Renick Street, you've got business uses. To the north, you've got agricultural uses. And that property has been up for auction recently. And this drawing also illustrates street width. Maybe we brought up the, Simmons was brought up at the planning commission. We took a, we'll look at the Witz on Simmons and it's eighteen feet. We felt at the narrowest place, twenty-four feet at the widest location. We felt we would widen Simmons from basically the rear entrance to the facility that we took, which I'm going to bring up here in a second as a concept drawing, all the way down to Renick Street. And we're making that in the form of a proffer. And if you could, maybe go ahead and bring up the concept drawing. This is a concept drawing. It's a little bit different than the one I presented at planning commission, I guess, in regards to the location of the stormwater and the future development area. We took, I guess, a closer look at the site and did relocate the stormwater. But basically, we would proffer the row of trees, evergreens, to adjoining the neighboring properties. Also, we would proffer at least a six-foot minimum privacy security type fence to surround the facility. Also, we would proffer that we will be in substantial, I guess, sorry, with a general conformity with the presented concept drawing, although we may shift some of the driving dollars and building locations on site. Also, we would agree to reduce the peak rate of flow in the channel on Simmons Road. And Teal Street, the storms west end are equal to a ten-year storm event to a level less than the current flow rate. Also, we would, as I mentioned, we widen Simmons Road there to a twenty-four foot width. We'd be willing to make all of those as proffers, which would be guaranteed to the adjoining property owners that the town would do. Of course, we'll do anything that town council desires in addition to that. Also, we know that this is, it's conditional use permit as well. So, council could put any conditions on the request. As far as operations, basically general public works operations, we have solid waste will operate from there and that will include garbage truck storage. We typically tip those before we bring them back to the facility. I wouldn't guarantee you that that won't hundred percent be the case, but that would generally be the case. And if we do, maybe make one additional stop because we missed a couple, we would crush it and, like I say, basically dump it next day. In regards to fuel storage, and I know there was a concern in regards to wells, the street widening drawing earlier had had a couple of blue locations on it. Those are actually locations of wells in the area. And all our fuel storage is more than a hundred feet from the wells and we're needing basically any necessary setbacks for separation from wells. And like I say, in regards to other uses on the facility, we would have a mechanical garage. We would have equipment storage. Our public works, I guess, total employment's around a hundred and six. We were totally staffed on site at this facility. We, at this point, we'd have eighty-six people is what we planned on this site. Like I say, we'd have equipment storage. As regard to noise, probably one of the biggest disturbances that I think you would expect from us would be during snow removal operations. Normally, we operate during daylight hours. We will do emergency response for things like water breaks. Like I say, those are, generally, they aren't so disruptive to a neighborhood. It might be utility truck. Yes, we might occasionally need quick to take out a backhoe or something like that. But generally, like I say, it's just occasional and it might be one piece of equipment versus multiple pieces of equipment. Snow removal, we will operate basically twenty-four hours a day, around the clock, until, until the snow removal is done. That's our policy that we will hit basically, remove snow, hit all the streets at least once within forty-eight hours. After we clear the streets, within forty-eight hours of the end of the snowfall. And we've always met that here at the town. I think we do pretty good in regards to snow removal. I do think we'll be a good neighbor to the neighborhood. I think, like I say, I think the buffer row of trees and the fence would certainly help. I was requested at planning commission to come up with a schematic of what it would look like from different angles. And I'm actually working on that. I wasn't able to do it at this point, but by next meeting, I'd hope to have that. And I'll just, I guess, open up to any other comments. Be glad to answer your questions if you may have as well.
Who's there engineering?
Also, let you know, we've got the public works director, Jim Landsini's here as well. It's engineering director, Mike Kelly. Water, water capacity was brought up at planning commission and sewer. We should have enough capacity at our pub, pub station. I know that was brought up. It should be enough and actually this would be less than residential use if it was used as residential use.
Were those the drawings that they engineered, the engineer and drawings the planning commission was requesting from you?
This is not. They're looking at, I think, something more like a street view.
And then they also request that you build the information about their pieces of land that you had mentioned, right? Was that correct?
They did ask, yes. And I told them that that...
Were you able to provide those to them?
I did not because I told them that that had been discussed by council during closed meetings. And I didn't want to discuss, I guess, potential other properties in open session. I think that would be a good idea.
Pieces of lands being discussed as well?
And this really is the only other property, I think, that's kind of been under consideration at this, at this point. We've looked at property both in town and out of town.
I don't think you gave us that information, did you? To town council? Do you provide that information? Because I don't remember hearing...
Town council knows what closed meetings they've had in regards to...
Well, I know which count, closed meetings we have, but I don't remember discussing all their properties for planning, for public works.
I don't think we ever said, I think we settled that none of them that we had looked at to date would do the job, would be. So, there was no need for getting back to council to discuss because we were not going to make an offer.
So, you guys made the decision, not town council?
No, we don't have it. In the, in the one meeting, it was discussed that...
Well, I don't remember. I know that the public works. But anyhow, so, were you able to provide that information to them or not?
I did not because, like I say, right now, we aren't considering any other properties really and the fact that it's... If it's councils, I don't discuss closed meeting items with general public or in, in general public. Our policy, basically.
Can I mention something?
I think that's the reason we have closed meetings.
About the budget amendment, I feel like, you know, it's going to, and I know we're under this properties right here, but also this was going to planning commission. And I know that one of the items under the budget item was regarding stipends for planning commission.
It has nothing to do with the...
I know it doesn't, but it still has to go.
We're not going to discuss it.
But it has to go.
We're not going to discuss it.
Planning commission has to go down this item as well.
If you're out of order, I'll give you one more chance. Come in line or you should up late.
You can leave.
Come on in here.
I don't have to leave.
Oh. Will say?
Well, try.
Thank you. Anyone else to address this?
I just have one question, Matt. It's probably not on, not on here, but you said something about wells were notified, the location of several wells.
We had, at the planning commission, it was brought up that one of the joining property owners had a well and they said they had concerns with things like the fuel storage. The locations, we actually identified two wells in the area. But we are meeting all, all necessary setbacks.
They're in blue on this map?
There would be a hundred-foot setback from those wells for anything like a fuel storage tank. And we're, we're more than meeting that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I will say, come on up. Y'all presented a petition last, at the planning commission meeting that is, three petitions, basically all the same thing. We have those and that petition is going to be distributed to town council prior to us meeting and voting on the file out process.
Well, that, that's fine. I was wondering if y'all were made aware of that and how many residents in the area opposed it, just about all of them did. I'm Robert Mitchell and I own property on Teal Street. And just want my voice heard in opposition to the zoning request. The whole purpose of zoning is to keep gross injustices being placed where it badly affects neighboring property owners and their property values. Comprehensive plans there to guide future growth, taking in considerations of current zoning and how the growth impacts current property owners. There's a difference between buying property in an area where industrial properties are in the area and knowing what's there and if it's acceptable for you versus the injustice of moving an industrial area next to your property and being stuck with the effects when the property is shown as residential and future growth. I doubt there'd be much consideration for this if it was anybody but the town making the request. Hope the town council here makes their decision based on what's best for the current residents in the area. This whole project looks like something that should be tucked away on the corner of the town somewhere out of sight, out of mind, out of mind for people doing their everyday life. The property in question, perfect area for residential with property values what they are. Might need to be a little more dense than R two, but residential is going to be better than having an industrial location beside your property. There'll be a lot of heavy trucks going in and out of an area that's already congested area. And just don't feel like that it's the right thing to do. And I hope y'all take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I even breathe water? I'm so sorry. My gosh, you.
Yes, Joyce Radford, five-ten, Ellitt Road, Christiansburg. I just have a question. I have the appraisal here for the properties that says this is good to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six for a total of three hundred and eighty-one thousand. And the town wants to buy the property for one point six million. And you said that's what it was appraised for, for after rezoning. Well, I thought that's what we were here for, is rezoning.
What we did was when we started talking about this, we as council authorized the town manager to have the property appraised. And he appraised, it had it appraised as R two, which is residential, and I two, which is what we were looking at. So, that property in residential is going to come back, even if we left the I two off, residential is going to come back to praising for more than agriculture.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's just confusing when, when we haven't even rezoned yet and then it gets a new appraisal for one point six million. I thought that's what we were here for, was the new rezoning.
But, that's a public hearing portion. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Rick Blunt, from Teal Street. I'm concerned come winter time, it's dark and they start flicking the lights on in this place and light up my backyard like a stadium. Because I'm going to back right up to it. And those little six-foot trees ain't doing a whole lot of good. It'll take a lot of years for them to get high enough to do me any good. I'm concerned about how you control the water drainage or damage on this lot. If something spills, I don't want it to be on my property. If it does, I'll be down your throat like you won't believe. I've been in the trucking industry fifty years. And I know what happens when you start spilling diesel fuel and gasoline and making a mess. So, I appreciate if you think of a little better idea. I want to make sure something there to protect the stuff doesn't leave that lot.
Ladies, I'm sorry. If you have a discussion, would you take it outside and then come back in?
Said I appreciate it very much if you would, if they had something there to make sure that a spill will not leave that lot. I don't want it on my yard. I think it's only fair to me that I get that protection and the rest of us too. I mean, I enjoy, it's why I bought on Teal Street, peacefully quiet. Now, honestly, it can be a nightmare for me. My old age, I'll be sitting there, sitting outside looking at the lights and not sitting out enjoying the backyard without looking at this whole conglomerate you're building here. Can you tell me someplace in town, out of the way of a housing area? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hopefully, by now, you know me, Russell Crockett. I live at three fifty Teal Street, which is the lowest point in the whole thing. And I have yet to hear anything about any kind of water runoff study. When you see all, you've got streets in there, you've got hard surface buildings with roofs. And again, that water, as it is now, with just the field, it floods my place. It, that ditch line runs full. And I dare say, if any of y'all ever been by to look at that ditch, maybe one or two of you, but I have pictures I'd be glad to share with you. When a hard rain comes, it's awful. And can you slide that picture down where that, the other way? Okay, it must've been that other slide. That last meeting, I pointed out in the, there's a dark area on the, I guess, the overhead view. It becomes a lake in there. And there's no way for the water to get out when that ditch line is full. That's, that's the other view that you had before that.
Slide down, please. It's that one, that one right there. Slide the view down. See that corner, let me walk over. I live right, I got twelve lots right here. See how round out that is? I hope you can see that. That's what I'm talking about. When it rains hard and that's just grass in that field. It gets a pond right there. It's floated lumber that I've had stacked in that corner out, three or four feet over. I've had to move it twice because of that. Now that they've sold it, two hundred seventy-two acres, in the near term, there's gonna be some houses built on that nine point something acre spot that was once, you know, proposed to be sixty-two units, which I disagreed with. Once you take the trees off of that and put in townhouses or whatever that was planned, that ditch line won't hold it. The same with that other-
The other property, is that the divorced property you're talking about?
The divorced property sold, it'll be building soon. Your other picture where you had all the proposed streets put in there and hard surface roofs and everything, that water's gotta go somewhere. And the only thing I see is that little ditch line where all that tree line right there, that yellow line, those are just little bushes and scraps and stuff. It's not big enough now to hold everything. And I have yet to hear, is there a proposal, how much water runoff is going to be there? And the other one too, they, the engineer a few years back said, oh, we'll build a holding pond over there with that old trailer beside of me and make a little greenway, but that wasn't gonna do it. And that's, that's one of my biggest things right there. I'm the low man on the totem pole. Maybe y'all don't care about that, but if it was your backyard, I guarantee you'd be concerned. I've lived, thirty-three years I've lived there. I've argued, fought, begged with the town, town managers, town engineers. Nothing, absolutely nothing has been done about that. And that's where the water comes under my driveway, which is town property, there's three sixteen inch tubes. That's all it'll take to put that water through. When that ditch line gets the dead wood and stuff in it, comes right to those tubes. I'm out there Sunday evening, four o'clock, five o'clock in the rain, in the cold, with a pitchfork, getting it out to keep it from flooding me. Something's gotta be done about that. And I would really appreciate it not being what y'all are talking about. You got, people talk about the smell. The wind always comes from Hubble Electric across that field towards every one of us. I don't care how clean you clean those trucks, it's gonna be some smell, it's gonna be some broodings, insects. I don't know what your plan is for that, whether you're gonna spray oil on that holding pond to kill mosquitoes and what, but, you know, I sound like a broken record, I know, but I live there and my property value is gonna hurt too. I've got a lot to lose with twelve lots, one and a third acres. So that's all I gotta say, it's just, it's not right.
Sir, could you point out where you live at again, please?
Yes. This is my business right now.
Okay.
This is the ditch line I'm referring to, comes from Hubble, all the way across, comes to front of my property. Where that driveway right here is, that's where I'm talking about the town, that's two. And I was told one time, I didn't finish, that my property goes right out here. Got twelve down that ditch. I asked the towns and they got those tubes and put in a bridge, something big enough to take that water and other stuff because upstream, there's tubes that go under the streets that can handle that water and take it on over in the industrial park. But it's, not ever happened. They said, well, if you buy it, we'll put it in. That's town property, that's not my property where the road comes across from Teal Street. Now, where the yellow line is and the driveway, that's me. And I don't see why, if I'm paying town taxes and county taxes, why would I have to buy my own bridge? When that ought to be a town responsible. Just head off a problem. Anyway, I guess I've said enough about that, but it's just not right. I'll take last, let me add this last, we got a pointer, we don't have to get up there. Last week I said, didn't have a pointer, why don't you cut that road right there and get an easement or something through there, put that drainage pipe straight across instead of coming over, down, under the, it goes right here at the ditch line, somewhere right, oh, I said this side. And goes around behind there and then back in the park. It's just a big, big slow turn in water. And it will flood me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. What is this portion of the public hearing, the next is a conditional use permit request by the town for exactly the same property for exactly the same distribution that we had before. Do you want to address conditional use permit?
Well, it's all about two members that live close to this property, that they were unable to come to my joy coil and she had to be at work for some, something. And then there was another person by the name John Charlo.
Yes.
On Teal Street. They had to be out for work.
The, John was here at the public hearing and brought this petition in, so we referred John and, okay. Anything else? And I'm going to close the public hearing, just going into the consent agenda. We have the approval of amendments, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, monthly bill list, resolution recognizing November thirtieth through December seventh, twenty twenty-four, as small business days. Approved Deputy Finance Director Mark Evans as an additional town signer, town check signer. Order construction contract, tract to Premier's Route Limited, in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars to construction of the Walters Bus Station replacement project. It's scheduled for a hearing from town Christiansburg Community Block, grant CBDG, CDBG, twenty twenty-three. And saw a lay with Daniel Ford to the evaluation report, Mrs. Haywood, for December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussions?
Just-
Okay, should I just make a, just the resolution recognizing the small business days and the significance to doing it for a week? Normally, it is done as small business Saturday and we, I'm working with the County Chamber of Commerce, looked at the fact that small business Saturday happens to be the Saturday after Black Friday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and also rival football, college football Saturday. And so it's like the worst Saturday in the world to go shopping or to own a business and think someone's gonna come shopping. So I actually proposed this, sent it, I sent a letter to the National Chamber of Commerce and the state asking them to relook the day they use small business Saturday. So I'm proud to know that we're gonna make this a week-long event instead of just a day that's playing lip service to small businesses, so.
I wonder what a free tax weekend will look like, or maybe like a free tax week will look like for small businesses too.
That's it. Thank you.
I mean, I don't, you normally, and other nuclear players, we actually, we start things.
People possibly do like a local one, with meal stocks and everything else.
Ah, not really. Anyway, okay, so I have, any more comments? Just headline.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hoggart.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Six, thank you very much. Two introductions and presentations. Yes, Scott Wickham, Robinson Foreman Cast, who's at the physical year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report. Scott? And you have copies of this report in front of you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, mayor and council. Again, my name is Scott Wickham, I'm partner in charge of the town's audit. We just recently wrapped up the FY twenty-four, June thirty, twenty twenty-four, year-end audit report. You do have a hard copy there in front of you that was just finalized here a few days ago and then a small printout also in front of you, which is the same as the presentation that'll be on the screen. I don't plan to go over the full one hundred and fifty-page report in detail. But if you have questions, I believe if you send them to Randy, he'll happily pass them on to me and I can respond to those questions as you go through it. So first, I wanna hit a few high points of the audit report. It's a hundred and fifty pages. The first report that we issue is the independent auditor's report. This is the opinion on the factual statements and it speaks to the numbers presented in all the exhibits. The town, again, has received an unmodified opinion, which is a good, clean opinion. And so that's the best opinion you can get, meaning the numbers presented are purely accurate. The next section in the report is the management's discussion and analysis. And this is a brief summary of the overall activity for the year. It gives some comparative data from the prior year to this year. And there's a good, small section to read and get a high-level overview. The town does a good job, the town staff does a good job of writing this section very detailed. Getting to the exhibits, exhibit one is a statement of net position, which is on the full accrual basis of accounting. And the governmental funds and government activities include several different types of accounting, different levels of accrual. So when I say full accrual accounting, that includes all of your infrastructure and your buildings and your vehicles and all the long-term debt. Modified accrual accounting is shorter-term focused, so you've got your current year cash plus receivables, less short-term payables. It does not include the long-term bonds that you pay down the road as well as the infrastructure. That's in the full accrual accounting. Exhibit one is on that full accrual and has a net position or a net worth of the town. Exhibit three is the balance sheet of those government funds. That's on that shorter-term, more long-lived year budget. As you were discussing that budget amendment, the fund balance is what you use for those, the unassigned fund balance in those as well. Exhibit nine speaks to the business-type activities. It's a statement of cash flows. And that is a good exhibit to look at for how your water and sewer fund and your stormwater fund are operating. Again, both the town water and sewer fund and stormwater fund are having positive operations so that they're generating enough revenue to cover their operation costs as well as the capital cost that they are occurring each year. The second report that we issue is the independent report on controls and compliance. Again, the town has no findings reported in that opinion. And the third report we issue is the uniform guidance opinion and that's related to the federal programs. You all received a good amount of federal funding from, passed through from B dot for a lot of your highway construction progress. So a good, another opinion there that is clean with no findings. And then the schedule of federal awards towards the very, very back of the report does detail those federal funds. So if you're looking for what was included in those reviews, that's where this will be. But in summary, three good reports, as far as no findings reported, the town compliance was really good with all the testing. I believe you all went through the numbers in detail with that budget and discussion, but I do have some high-level numbers if you move to the next slide, please. Some five-year trend information for the general fund. You can see the various revenue categories and the growth of those over that five-year period. For the total revenues of the general fund, growing just under eight percent per year. All the local taxes are heavily buoyed by the meals taxes as well. On the next page, you have expenditures and fund balance and a similar five-year trend. You can see that operating expenditures are just over five and a half percent per year growth there. A lot of that is inflation-related as well as projects and things you all have been doing the last few years. The important part, as far as I can see, is the unassigned fund balance and that's the ability to do additional operations and have reserves. And you can see that growing at five and a half percent per year over that time period. So the town is in really good shape financially as well as those three clean payments we issued. The next current year information gives you a pie chart of where your revenues come from in the general fund. You can see a large portion there are local taxes and a good amount of property taxes as well.
Can you remind me, what was the amount, the percentage that was increased because of the new prime values of that home's real estate? Was it like two million or was it more?
I don't have that in front of me, what the assessment value went up. Do you know the ballpark about what that was?
Percentage was a little over seven.
Yeah, the overall increase was seven. The normalized tax rate would have been thirteen, the normalized tax rate would have been like thirteen point zero nine, I believe. And we increased the taxes and rounded that up to fourteen cents. So it was less than a penny increase on the real estate tax.
But it was assessed at a higher value, so everybody got an increase really on the real estate value of their home. Well, the real estate value of their homes, most people went up really, really, really much.
Yes, the assessed values did increase substantially. However, because we calculated what would be a normalized rate, which would have been the thirteen point zero something, I don't recall that specifically, but then we did a fourteen cent real estate tax. So in effect, it, other than like a penny per hundred, kept them pretty even. And for example, my personal real estate tax actually went down by about two dollars. I guess I get, but, yeah, I mean, that was the whole point, was that you have to normalize that rate. It won't allow you to increase beyond a certain level without the actual increase, which we increased a little bit less than a penny.
We actually reported on that, so I know that.
Yes.
But as far as like the amount of money that it brought in for town Christiansburg, what was that amount, do you remember?
No, I'd have to go back because that I can't see in this report. It probably amounted to a couple hundred thousand.
A penny, a penny is about three hundred thousand, right? So it was less than that?
Yeah, I would guess it was close to two hundred thousand as an estimate.
Our real estate tax is around five million in income?
I don't think it matters.
The real estate revenue for the year was about four point two million dollars.
So the previous years, I think we were using four million, so roughly two million.
And Miss Dick, some of the information you asked about is on table seven, page one twenty-one of the-
Is this available to the public, this audit?
The audit report?
Yeah. It will be posted on the website. Tomorrow, actually. I always wait till it's presented to council before I post it up on the website.
And the small pack too?
It can be. It was emailed to the town today, so. But yeah, the information as far as the assessed values is on table seven, page one twenty-one of the ticket report. So the general fund expenditures by section there, you can see about a third of them have gone to public safety and a little bit to administration and a good amount to parks and rep as well. For a few years, we had a lot of standards implemented from GASB or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Then there was a little bit of delay during COVID. Now we have several new standards that are coming into play in the next few years. Compensated absences, statement number one oh one, will be in effect for the next audit. The impact of that will impact your accounting liabilities. It won't impact your daily operations, but it would impact the amount you have in your liabilities for compensated absences. Generally, it will probably increase liabilities. Most of those liabilities at the current standards are calculated based on if employee leaves, the cash value they get, that is the further second indication time, that is the liability. In the new standard, the time they have to use as well as any cash payment would be considered for the value. So I do expect those balances to increase in new standards, but just an accounting liability and not anything on your cash or your budget necessarily. The next two items, additional disclosures, there'll be a few changes, but nothing significant for the town. And the statement one oh three, many years ago, they set aside a project to- Uh, and the statement one oh three, uh, many years ago, they set aside a project to make the governmental funds easier to follow between. As I mentioned earlier, there was the modified accrual and the full accrual, and, um, they were trying to make one accounting method that made it a little easier to follow. Uh, and as they went through this entire project, um, they came back with some minor changes. So their their goal was to make them a lot more of the same, and then as they got into it, they they struggled and they only had some minor changes. So, um, there will be some changes on segment one oh three, so, uh, but not as significant as initially, so. Overall, again, as the town's audit went really well and processed, um, the town staff did a great job of uploading files to us, um, remotely. We got a good start on ahead in the office, and then we visited on-site and looked at the remainder files that we needed. So the process went really well, the town's in good shape financially and all good clean opinions of the town, so. Any questions? Thank you all.
Uh, next, which is not on the agenda, however, I have asked Christina Edie if she would introduce, uh, one of our newest employees.
Good evening. Um, I am excited to introduce Miles Campbell to you all tonight as our new Small Business Solutions Manager. Uh, Miles came to Montgomery County in twenty sixteen for college, and he loved it so much, he never left. Um, he and his wife actually live in Christiansburg, right down the street. Um, Miles comes from a small business-minded family. Um, his parents owned, um, a few small businesses, I believe. Uh, and he previously worked with a local radio group, serving as a liaison between the organization and small businesses in the area. So he has the experience that we've been looking for. Um, we are happy to have him on the team. He's done great so far, he's been here for three days. Uh, yep, three whole days and hit the ground running, so I'm going to invite Miles to come up for just a second.
Thanks Christina, and, uh, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to, uh, meet you guys face to face. Um, I am really excited for this position, um, small business is one of my passions. Um, I've seen firsthand with both of my parents owning small businesses, the kind of impact that it can have for the business owner, for their family, for the employees and their families, and also for the community as a whole. Uh, so I think we have, excuse me, a huge opportunity to make an incredible impact in the community in Christiansburg. Um, I think we're going to start, uh, with a lot more open and transparent communication. Um, I'd like to go meet every single business in Christiansburg, I know that'll take some time. Um, but I think, uh, one of the hardest things as a business owner is that feeling that, um, you know, when you have challenges, that you're alone. Um, so I want to be able to be on their team, be a resource, um, and help them grow and continue to build up Christiansburg. Um, so again, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and, uh, thank you Christina.
Thank you Scott, Christine. Citizens comments, this is our section where we allow citizens to come forward and discuss issues. Procedures, you have three minutes, uh, come to the microphone, introduce your name and address, and direct your others to the chair.
Christine Walz, thirteen seventy Rigby Street. I sent each of you on council a packet. I am very disappointed with the town's decision to move forward with mobilizing Main Street. But the partnership that you have is with the com, an organization that is still not complying with law, Virginia state law regarding charitable organizations. They have had their state corporation commission license revoked four times. They have had their IRS five oh one C three nonprofit revoked between two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen. And basically, that's a no big deal. I believe in partnerships, but partnerships, especially when you're spending other people's money, should be strategic. Mobilizing Main Street would have given you an opportunity to create a steering committee and have somebody that was actually going to follow the rules. I have real concerns. I have been to Central Business District Committee meetings, even back when Sam Bishop was on Central Business. And during that time period, I don't remember DCI even showing up to those meetings. I don't see them at the meetings that are going on now. In a partnership, a healthy relationship, both parties show up, and I have not seen that from DCI. And I'm sad to say that, because I think there are some really good people there. I think Mr. Simonis is a really nice person, but the organization itself is very flawed, and I, it's hard for me to see how this succeeds. If you have an organization that can't follow basic rules. The program is going to require a lot of times for them to show up, and I haven't seen them show up. You know, there was the comment, well, it's just a letter of support. It's a letter of support, but that requirements for the program, and I'm going to read the one that's going to, um, basically be what your part is, because when you sign that letter of support, you pretty much were signing on for that. As of seven twenty twenty-five, there will be monthly requirements for business licenses, building permits, and for you to go ahead and do any public improvements in that area. Heck, I'm not even sure where that area is anymore, because nobody's come forward and said, this is what the downtown is. I know that originally Mr. Wilson said, well, if it doesn't include Camry, then I'm not going to be for it. But apparently that that's changed somehow. But I'm very, I'm very, I don't know. I just don't understand the thought process. The businesses, if they have a flying man, that's horrible, terrible, awful. There's one set of rules for the businesses, but another set of rules for the five oh one C three that, oh, they don't have to follow laws? It makes no sense to me, none. And usually government makes sense to me, but the decisions that come here, I don't get them.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Um, I just wanted to make a comment from our last appearance here, Wynne Phillips, RP Freeland Inc., uh, representing the applicant for the rezoning, our next topic, I believe, in discussion, or coming up here this evening. Um, at our last, uh, appearance, we had some concerns from a stakeholder around this parcel, Victory Restoration Church. Following that meeting, we did meet closely with Pastor Jamie Hutton, his wife, um, and another member of their congregation. And I do have an email here just sharing his thanks and support, um, of this project. May I approach and pass it out or?
Yes, you'd like to approach and hand it to us.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah. And I won't do you the ser, the service of reading it, but essentially, we're really excited, um, to be able to work closely with the church, um, now and then hopefully in our our upcoming project. Thank you. How much questions?
None. Very good. Anyone else? If you know one on the citizens portion of, uh, citizens comments section, we'll move on to committee reports, uh, committee reports over there. Sure, uh, um, business, not a billion thirty on the, uh, uh, grant programs and processing one.
No, we're still working on it because we're still trying to come up with a schedule for the regular members.
We'll move into discussion and action by Mayor and Council, a zoning request by Robert P. Freeland, registered as, uh, FP Land, uh, LP Avenue, property number, a zoning property located between Moose Drive, Northwest and Bishop's Gate Road, Northwest, approximately sixteen point three three acre tax quarter. Five five six dash eight dash nine partial number is, ID is number oh oh eight oh nine five. From eight acre acreage, V three general business and V three general business to R three multifamily residential. Property is designated as residential on a land use map, two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held in November the eighth of twenty twenty.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Comments, questions, comments?
I'm glad that from the last meeting, that there were some productive conversations. And I am glad that, um, you know, things got figured out and things got cleaned out and everything else, so I'm glad that you're here tonight.
Any other comments? Senator Park?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That's six oh. The dis, conditional use of a request for Dr. Freeland for the properties described above, uh, to allow planned housing development, a multifamily project of a maximum of one hundred and sixty-two apartments in the proposed R three multifamily residential district, um, district of property located Moose Drive, Bishop's Gate Road.
I can watch it to some.
Second.
Got a motion on the second, and you can comment your discussions. Senator Park?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Let us accept thank you. Staff of Wolfstown Men?
I'd just, uh, point out that the, uh, November twenty, uh, sixth council meeting, regular council meeting's been canceled, that's the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, also, I guess, ask if you have any particular topics or if you want to have the work session on November twentieth. Some of the topics that have been mentioned are the emergency services funding request with the county, uh, tourism, the Main Street program, capital projects, and advertising. So up to council.
Randy, let me, before we make a decision on that, Christina, help me on this.
Yes, sir.
The final presentations for launch, is that the twentieth?
Yes, sir.
November, which is the date of our public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Of our work session?
Yes, sir.
Any conflict with this room?
It would, but we can work around that if council decides. We just moved off to December, do we?
Just not?
Do we have to have the meeting this month?
No, we can, we can.
Not, not necessarily.
Should we just keep it this month? I mean, you've been on a, a lot of stuff going on on the agenda, so.
Just want agreement to skip November.
Yes.
That'd be something we can, uh, close to, uh, if that's agreeable with council, then we will not have our close to our work session. What else you got?
I'll point out that Town Hall will be closed, uh, November twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth for Thanksgiving. And the Christmas parade and Christmas at the market will be, uh, Friday, December thirteenth, with the market being five to eight and the parade being at seven PM, and the tree lighting being, I guess, especially six fifty-ish. And also, uh, Thursday, December fifth, is the Chamber Awards, uh, and dinner. And, uh, right now I have, uh, we have a table of ten. I've got, uh, Mayor Barber and his wife, Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Hockett, Councilwoman Hicks, and Councilwoman Bowman, and all your spouses signed up, so that's, that's the ten at the table.
Um, would?
I I I'm fine with not going if council, I definitely yield to council, so. Um, if, how how would you want to handle spouses?
I think we should pay.
Pay for my spouse.
I'll pay you twenty-two.
So, e- everybody pay for spouses?
Yes.
If you're up for award, I know that, I guess, the past couple of years, we've done it, but you, we didn't pay for it. How how do you want to handle it in that case?
I'll, I'll make the, I'm up for award, but I'll make the.
Okay, okay. And, uh, let's see, that that's all I've got.
I, I have a question, Randy. Do you have an alternate date for in case there is like raining or something for the tree lining?
We, we typically don't have an alternate date, uh, I guess off the top of my head, uh, because of the other parades is typically why. Uh, because Radford's is typically the the Saturday after hours, Blackserg's is typically the Friday before hours. And because of that, we typically don't have a rain date.
We have been really lucky for the last years.
We, we have.
Great days. No, but I know, but it's always good to think about, you know, what if, just, uh, it's better to be planned ahead than later on, so.
We've had, we've had parades in years in the rain and the snow, and, uh, we had pants drop out and the bus was tipped off. Her lips would freeze to the mouthpieces and her instruments and hold them, so.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
It's a go that day.
Uh, we have had council actually riding a bus before too, when it was about twenty degrees before, so.
Okay, possible. Don't.
Any other style? Your council reports?
I gotta say that they, um, they got a new person for, uh, agency and I'm making a, um, that's going to start soon, or you already started.
Anyone else?
Well, it's not really a report, but just I heard a lot of good comments about the, uh, trick or treat downtown and stuff, how busy the streets were and stuff like that, so. And I drove by a couple times and it was crowded, so it's good turnout.
It was, it was a good turnout, we had, it was four hundred and eighty-three children through Town Hall.
I think that was total people.
Uh, people.
Yes.
Sorry, it's still, it's still crowded people, and it was nice to go out on the street and see, uh, dating, predating the age of the wall, but, but the way downtown Christiansburg was in the sixties growing up as to the the activity downtown and and having people out there, so. It was good to see, we had a lot of comments, how much people out of town coming over, so that's, that's a good.
The weather cooperated so nicely.
Hey, Mayor, and the thanks to the, uh, high school and the American Legion for a great Veterans Day parade.
They did have, turned out, brought good relatives, school kids, but it was good, it was a good event. The short did a lot this year, a lot of us veterans came right along, so we did show, it really turned out really nicely.
Well, the offerings, which I was, so.
The store that had, oh, because if I got free bands, I, I'm not sure each month showed, they may have been in a competition, but anyway, it went, it went well. Uh, alrighty, any other business?
Alright, well then, yes. I make a motion for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A one for the discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools or of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. This closed meeting is being held for discussion of the treasurer, finance director, and town manager positions compensation.
A second.
Motion on the second.
No, don't you have discussion? I do think it would be good for, especially for me, maybe all you know who we are talking about, because I still have no clue what we're talking about, and this is nothing against you Valerie. Um, but are we talking about Valerie, are we talking about the new treasurer person, are we talking about other people? Or what are we, who are we talking about in this discussion?
If she will give you a second, I'll mention for you very easily. We have a current director of finances, Mrs. Tweedy. Mrs. Tweedy will be our finance director until December thirty-first. So any discussion we're having tonight is about her, and if you remember in the resignation letter or a retirement letter, not resignation letter, she outlined a couple of things that she would like for us to consider. Since we only have this meeting and one more in December, I, I felt that we needed to be able to, uh, to reach a decision, uh, while she's still being fully involved. So this is all of it, we're talking about the compensation of package that she has discussed. The other portion is a, is is being two points, and we're going to be talking about compensation with town manager. And that's all we got.
I do think that I do remember that letter, and he asked for compensation, asking for us more than a sixty J number for this. And I want to find out, especially. And I want to find out, especially since this is at the end of exiting a job, I wish you would have wrote this at the beginning of this year. And I feel like, you know, there is compensation for, you know, for those days and things like that, but I don't feel like discussing this in a closed meeting when, you know, we had so many members already that worked for the town and now already actually, you know, already have left. So are we going to go back and actually, you know, pay those people too and everything else? I just think that, you know, going through this closed meeting after, you know, you have turned in your resignation letter, Valerie, and you have done a really good, a retirement, and you have done a really, really good job with the town. But I do think he just called me off guard, especially because I've never seen it before.
Anyone else? Madam Corr? Let's go to town, closed session.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Good as far as one, we will go into closed session, uh, we're going to take a brief rest, about three or four minutes, and I'll be calling back in. When we come back in, the only people that I would like to have in the room is the H R Director, uh, Mr. Wingfield, and Ms. Brock.